I have a quorum, and I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
So move.
Okay, we have a motion and a second question or comments. If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All in same sign, motion carries. Public hearings is going to be joined with council and President Hansel will be running the public hearing.
7:34, we'll open the public hearing for Barrett Egg Service doing business as Barrett Pet Food Innovations for business subsidy. So we've got, John, did you want to?
Yeah, I'll start up. We have representatives here from Barrett as well as Jason Murray from David Brown and Associates and Carol Anderson from Morrison County Community Development. I will actually turn it over to them to give the introduction and background information before we go for the public input. There you go, so Carol.
Thank you. Carol Anderson from Community Development in Morrison County. I'm just here to introduce the project right now. Tom and Mike Barrett are here, they're some of the owners of Barrett Pet Food. This is to give information on what they would like to do with their expansion to Little Falls. This would be 150,000 square foot facility on property east of Highway 10 just before the 371 split. The total project is approximately $20 million, including building and equipment. They will have approximately 100 jobs within three years after the construction of the facility is complete. It's going to take about a year to build the facility and get the equipment set. I will let the Barretts talk about their customers, their benefits, wages they pay. They manufacture a vast array of pet food for a variety of animals. So with that, I would like to introduce Tom and Mike Barrett.
All right, good evening, everybody. As mentioned by Carol, I'm Tom Barrett. I co-manage Barrett Pet Food with my sister, co-own it with my father and my mother, Mike and Bunny, she's not here this evening. So we are a small, at least in manufacturing terms, pet food manufacturer in Brainerd, between Brainerd and Piers. We specialize in manufacturing pet food, mainly super premium pet food for dogs and cats, but also for small animals, birds, that type of thing, but generally dog and cat food. We manufacture for foods for companies all over the world. A lot of our exports will go to Asia, Canada, South America, but primarily here in the U.S. and Canada. Our customer base ranges from customers in California to Toronto to the United Kingdom or Minnesota. So we have quite a range of customers and as well as end-users of the food that we make. Currently, our company consists of just about 100 employees in our facility, self of Brainerd. We've been growing at a rate of about 30 employees a year for the last couple of years. Generally, we were doubling now, you know, as we've gotten bigger, not quite doubling, but close to it. I've been part of the business since 2009. My father started it a few years prior to that and initially started the business as a feed and fertilizer business. And when Sarah and I got involved, turned it into pet food and then eventually super premium pet food. And so that's where we've really grown our business. We have, of our 100 employees, we like to think that we provide a good place to work. We have, out of the 100 employees, generally speaking, we have very low turnover. I would say that if somebody works for us for a month, they don't leave. I think we've lost two people that have been with us over two years in the last five years, and that was both retirements. So we do try to focus on having a happy, healthy place to work with good benefits, good pay, and that's how we try to attract our employees. So that's obviously something that is important to us, something that we would like to bring here to Little Falls. It is part of our culture to foster that and ensure that we give something back to the community, which I think Brainerd would probably say the same, although we're not necessarily in the city limits of Brainerd, but we do try to ensure that we give back to the community in several ways, but obviously I think our employees would speak for that. So I think that's all I got.
Well, I don't really have anything to say. Tom kind of said it all, but I did bring some samples of what we make if anybody's interested. Maybe, yeah, I'll set them off here. And if anybody wants them, I really don't want to take them home.
You got stuff for tonight?
Yeah.
Fruit snacks.
Yeah, don't miss the bearded dragon.
Dinner, Greg?
Yeah.
There's a lot of white here. Oh, there's a turkey one fasted a little bit around the off so they can see if anybody recommends on any local store shelves.
Some of these little testes right?
Yeah.
Well, I think the closest you can get any of that is probably Chuck and Don's office.
Well, the only natural, and the rep who that would be found in PetSmart in St. Cloud, Petco as well, as well as I know that there is one pet specialty store in St. Cloud that sells several of the foods, including signature food, which is one of our biggest sellers. But generally, you will find them in independent pet food stores throughout the U.S.
Dana?
Good evening, council and EDA members. As part of the business subsidy law, the requirement on this public hearing is that we fully disclose potential assistance through the city and other local resources. As part of this, we anticipate a max of about $3 million in local assistance as part of that $3 million. It will be part of the Minnesota Investment Program targeted for $450,000. My understanding, the city's already held that public hearing on that application. A potential request up to $500,000 to Little Falls EDA for a revolving loan fund. We'll discuss TIF here in a moment, but the potential maximum assistance through the tax increment financing is $1.3 million, $115,000. And then the final portion of it yet to be, a dollar amount yet to be zeroed in on is a utility extension with the local gas company. We're anticipating between $570,000, $750,000, is that correct Carol, or is it trending in about that $750,000 potentially? Okay. For assistance in that. So the total max through these programs or through the assistance, and again, this isn't directly through the city as part of the Minnesota Investment Fund, that's a relationship with the Minnesota Department of Employment and potentially through the utility side, a relationship either with USDA or another state program to provide some assistance with that extension of that utility. So again, just for full disclosure, max of $3 million of total assistance.
Thank you. With that, we'll open it up for public comment and from the public wish to speak. I ask you raise your hand and state your name and address for records. Okay, go ahead, Robin.
The voters spoke clearly.
Name and address, please.
Oh, Robin Hansel, 807 First Street Southeast. The voters spoke clearly when they ousted Council President Jeremy Hansel, then mayor, Rogue Mayor Zilka, who obviously doesn't care what the voters think, promptly appointed Jeremy to the Economic Development Association, of which he is the president. Zilka's the president, that is. Of course, Zilka wants a yes man on board so he can assure pet projects such as Barrett Foods gets to the head of the line regardless if the taxpayers lose out. I oppose. If Barrett Pet Foods cannot make a profit without taxpayer-funded corporate welfare dollars, they should go work for someone who can. Nothing personal, I just oppose economic grants in general, and for a lot of reasons you're about to hear. In an article, Little Falls Council Supports Barrett Expansion, quote, "We can't pride ourselves on making anything no one else wants to do," Mike said. Mike said, "The odor was minimal because the company doesn't use products like intestines and other scraps." Mayor Greg Zilka said, "Based on a tour he took of the current facility, there was not a terrible odor. It doesn't smell like a meat processing facility," Zilka said. But in another interview where Klobuchar visits Brainerd area pet food maker from the Brainerd Dispatch, it says, "The smell of pet food was pungent even outside the building, and the factory itself had deafening noise. Those on tour were given white coats to wear so the smell didn't transfer to their clothing." I believe the Barrett folks spoke here about using kangaroo meats. From Rocky Pellegrino's Roop Pet Food Crumble is proving popular overseas, the smell of dead roo unmistakably to anyone who has cooked or worked with the animals is overwhelming in Rocky's small workshop, where a team of three workers process a couple of marsupials each week.
Anyone else wish to speak? Go ahead.
Shannon Barnes, 154817th Avenue Northeast. As some of you probably remember, we built a new facility out in the same business park. We also have an employee that drives pass out plant every day, it's never smelled anything. And I've talked to people in Piers, various types, it also said there doesn't smell. So from a fellow business member in the park, we're actually looking forward to these folks coming to town and creating more opportunity. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Go ahead.
Linda Berggraff, 1032 Fifth Avenue Southeast, Little Falls. As a previous small business owner in Little Falls, I am in favor of the city helping Barrett Pet Food Innovations with funding to help them expand their company in Little Falls. It will bring much-needed jobs into the area, jobs which will help other businesses grow, which means more jobs. We need businesses in town that pay good wages and benefits. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Jason Johnson, 154817th Avenue Northeast. I'm also in favor of this project. We are neighbors to the future location proposed here. I think it's a wonderful thing. We are a perfect example of a small business that has come to town with help from the city. And I look at just the initial impact and the things that people that come to see our business spend in town, the money we spend in town, buy from other local people, we've bought vehicles, we've hired employees, we've hired people, it has all been positive. And what these people can bring to this community far out channels what we do. And I think it's an amazing opportunity, and I look forward to them being my neighbor.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Anyone else for us to start around to? Go ahead, Robin.
A new study from the Reason Foundation employs a simple scientific model filled with county-level job creation database and business tax incentive data to explore the relationships between tax incentives and job creation to answer that very question. The study finds no correlation between tax incentives and job creation, suggesting the program and perhaps others like it have serious flaws to their ability to create jobs. The logic of this model is that by comparing two groups of counties that are similar in many ways, except for their incentive spending, we should expect counties with more incentive spending to have more jobs. The findings shown in the accompanying graph reveal that despite spending more than their counterparts on job creation tax credits, incentive-heavy counties realize no appreciable long-term gains in either gross or net job creation. This is largely because the success rate of companies is highly volatile. Some, 96% of companies fail within 10 years, taking jobs and capital down with them like a sinking ship. Incentive programs fail because they do not account for the fact that firms and the returns they are bidding on are highly volatile and prone to failure. Policymakers should not trust any job creation projects from a firm seeking incentives or a consultant enough to risk public money in order to just potentially win those benefits. Now, I have a question, I would like somebody, after all the public hearing is done, to please explain. Item number three says, "The expected increased estimated tax market value of the site without the use of tax increment is $13,428." For a 52-plus acre parcel, folks, that's $250 an acre, how can that be possible? This city is saying that is...
Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak? Third and final call, anyone else wish to speak? 7:50, we'll close the public hearing. There is no action on this item tonight.
Okay, any comments or questions by the EDA? I'd like to make a couple comments. First of all, I did tour that site more than once. Other people in the audience have, and I did not smell any strong odors on the inside, much less on the outside when we drove up. I wasn't even sure I was in the right place. Second of all, job creation, that we've done for ABS, worked with them, there's other communities looking for these businesses. We look at what we did with Lobash, how many jobs we created there. We worked with Airborne. We have brought so much business to this community that we had to work for, and most, if not all of it, is built on lands that, on land that has not generated property tax for us because it's been, this is school land, so we haven't been generating tax off of that, and most of it has been on city land, which we generated. So why let it sit empty for another 10, 20 years and get nothing for it? We can do TIF or whatever we're doing for 10 years, and then after that, we'll be drawing full property tax value. We're bringing in good businesses, and I don't like the term corporate welfare because you tell those 100 people at Lobash that we shouldn't do this, you tell the 75 or whatever they have at Airborne, we shouldn't do this, you tell these people that are going to be coming here, working for Barrett, that we shouldn't do this. This is good jobs and good benefits and a great community, and that's how we get to be great. Anybody else have comments?
I'll echo that. I think, I think this is one of, I've been in the EDA, I don't know how many years it is now, it's quite a few. This is the best deal I've seen in my whole term on the EDA. Carol's done a wonderful job on this. I don't see how we could turn this down. It would be crazy. Absolutely would be crazy. That's all I got.
Comments from the council?
I agree, I support it. I think it's a good one for this down. We need jobs, we need new businesses.
My understanding is that the 10 years of TIF, and correct me if I'm wrong, but those, the taxes, the property taxes that come to the city will be used to pay for that property. And then after that, what's the tax on a 10 mil, what, how many million dollar building is this, facility is this? 10?
Yeah, building.
What are the property taxes on a 10 million dollar facility? After 10 years, that's going to come to the city. If we don't do this, it's likely that this wonderful company that offers such great wages and such an excellent benefits package will go elsewhere. We need these jobs here in Little Falls, so we really do need to do this.
I'm going to add that if Carol hadn't done, put this together, we probably wouldn't have gotten this company. It probably would have gone to Brainerd or somewhere else. This is a very competitive market for businesses like this. We have to fight tooth and nail to get these kinds of companies to come here. I don't think people understand the free market that's out there and how many possibilities there are for companies like this to go other places. So yes, I think we have to do this, absolutely.
Any other comments?
Well, just, we, it wasn't discussed this time, but I think it was at the last meeting. Your organization sponsors 100% the healthcare coverage for the employees, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Nobody else gets a deal like that. I don't...
It's also a low deductible Medicare insurance that is good at any hospitals or clinics, so it's certainly not the cheapest plan that we could choose for employees.
I just, I believe we need option jobs for people to stay here. I don't, I'd like to see the statistics, I don't know. Maybe Mark Derby knows what percentage of our high school graduates we lose out of this community every single year. And I, and I just, I want people to stick around and raise their family. It's more than just looking, the myopic view of that particular building, it also includes them buying homes, paying property taxes on nicer homes, and the water utilities, it's more than just this building.
It's 100 people's livelihoods, you know, and it's a good living, and they're going to live here, and they're going to build here, just like, just like they said, and they're going to spend their money here, and this money is going to stay in the community. Thank you for choosing Little Falls.
Thank you. And a big thanks to Carol, obviously, you're very correct with that, obviously. We, before we even looked at Little Falls, when Carol came into the picture, obviously the inkling was to look at Brainerd because that's where we're from, it's the only place that we've ever manufactured. And obviously, yes, they were very interested, and we could have gotten the same type of package from Brainerd as well as communities around St. Cloud, but Carol brought so much to the table, we met, you know, the mayor and the rest of the team from Little Falls, and it just felt like the right opportunity. And once that all started rolling, we basically stopped searching for another site, it just, it felt like the right place for us, obviously. Not that it's not local to us, we're, you know, south of town Brainers, but it really, we felt, felt like it's the right opportunity, it's the right place to be.
Comments from the EDA? Okay, if not, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All in same sign, motion carries.
I don't know why you're not answering my question.
I'm sorry, I didn't know the answer, but since Knopfler retired, we've been retaining a lot more.
Resolution 2018-87, tax increment financing district number 41, adopt. So, floor, or is not?
Oh, again, Council President, this is the second public hearing that will happen tonight, so we need to call for the public hearing.
7:50, now we'll call the public hearing order.
Describe? Yes, this is for the tax increment financing district for the project that will encompass the property that is of interest for Barrett Pet Foods. This is primarily school district property, there will be some additional areas for roadway improvements that are included as well in this district. And we have Jason Murray here from David Brown and Associates to go through the finer details of this. If the project were not to be successful and not move forward, we would just not certify the district, so at this time, it's, we would have the resolution, if the resolution is passed, the district would be able to be established. We don't have to certify the district to implement the TIF financing. So it's not, it's something that still, there's contingency or concern that the project were to move forward. At this time, we're not anticipating that, we're just at a point where other pieces need to fall in place as well, but this being a critical component of that. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jason to get some of that TIF.
Thanks, Sean. Mr. President, Mr. Mayor, members of council, tonight, you're holding this public hearing to the merits of establishing tax increment financing district number 41. This is an economic development district which requires, main requirement is going to define that there's jobs and wage creation as part of it. As disclosed earlier, you've heard the project's goal, the number of job potential for this project, and so we clearly believe this will certainly meet the merits of the law. As part of the economic development district, it is a nine-year increment. The increment starts, the first year full value is anticipated based on the current construction timeline that's been provided. We're looking at 2021, 2022 would be the first year of estimated increment to be collected. As part of this TIF district, it is a one parcel TIF district. As John indicated, we are encompassing the parcel currently owned by the school district along with citing some additional roads adjacent to the property for potential improvement. As we currently speak today, we noted in the business subsidy hearing that potential capital costs through this TIF district is about $1.3 million, $1,315,000 as part of this TIF district. The potential for use of that currently, there's two obligations being discussed. One is the, to reimburse the school district for the property, using increment as it's collected to reimburse the school district over time, over those nine years. And then the second obligation is potentially pay for an outstanding assessment that currently lies in the property. So as we speak today, those are the two obligations that potentially will come from this TIF district. And again, as we move forward, if this project does commence, we will certainly be back in front of the council with a formal business development, business subsidy agreement that outlines these obligations in greater detail. So with that, Mr. President, Mayor, council members, I'll pause my comments on the TIF district, or if you have any questions, I can answer them at this time too, but I could pause and put the public hearing on.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. This time, we'll open it up for public comment and from the public wish to speak. Go ahead, Robin.
Robin Hansel, 807 First Street Southeast. It's important for the taxpayers in this city to know that the school district drive vigorously to get rid of the tax, the assessments on the property. There'll be more about that in the future. I oppose this TIF district financing. How the excess TIF program performed matters because home and business owners pay a higher share of property taxes when money is diverted to building projects, according to critics of such incentives.
This time, we'll open up for public comment. And from the public wish to speak? Go ahead, Robin.
Robin Hansel, 807 First Street Southeast. It's important for the taxpayers in this city to know that the school district tried vigorously to get rid of the tax, the assessments on the property. There'll be more about that in the future. I oppose this TIF district financing. While the excess TIF program performed matters because home and business owners pay a higher share of property taxes when money is diverted to building projects, according to critics of such incentives. If it were true that no real estate appreciation would have occurred in the TIF district but for, the TIF activities overlying governments, such as school districts and other special districts, would get the same amount of property tax revenue that they would have received without the TIF district. Unfortunately, these rules set up potentially perverse incentives by allowing cities to claim property tax revenue that might not have received in the absence of the TIF. In TIF, if TIF district expenditures are not documented in detail, observers may also suspect misuse of funds, such as money funnel to political allies in particular egregious cases. TIF can facilitate unproductive fiscal competition between neighboring jurisdictions, business tax incentives in general, and TIF in particular are vulnerable to overuse if potential beneficiaries can stimulate or a virtual or actual bidding war among competing governments. A business that is considered an expansion or relocation may use the existence of tax incentive programs to obtain benefits or threaten to leave to obtain more, even when the location would be to the business's most profitable option, even without the benefits. Economic theory suggests that under some conditions, such negotiations can reduce economic efficiency. Recent empirical evidence shows that business tax incentives in general are not well-targeted and often do little to stimulate economic growth.
Anyone else from the public wish to speak? Anyone else from the public wish to speak? Say none, Robin, go ahead.
Unfortunately, the design of TIF in many states makes it vulnerable to exploitation by cities, which can have been revenues that otherwise would have gone to overlying governments, especially school districts. Within individual states and cities, most often, TIF has been used in areas that were already moderately successful, and it has done little to stimulate growth in the most depressed areas. Business subsidies do not generate sustained economic growth. One reason is that subsidies are ultimately funded by higher taxes, which displays private sector investment. Another reason is that areas which become dependent on subsidies can lose their competitive edge and stagnate, just as individuals on welfare tend to stagnate. A better way for distressed regions to spur growth is to reform state and local tax and regulatory policies to encourage entrepreneurship and private investment. The EDA does not have any special abilities to revive growth that the states and private sector do not have. The federal funding of industrial parks, road projects, and other activities through the EDA just adds federal bureaucracy. The EDA also pits jurisdictions against one another in a zero-sum game when subsidies induce businesses to invest in some locations over others. Congress should abolish the EDA. The author also examines additional academic literature about the impact of TIF on school districts and other potential unintended side effects. The report concludes that although the results are mixed, TIF often fails to meet its primary goal to increase real estate development and other economic growth. And as my sign says tonight, do the right thing. There's a lot of empirical evidence to show that economic grants of any type do not work, do not benefit the taxpayer. If you don't mean, do your own research.
Time's up. Thank you. Believe me, we'll do the right thing. Third and final call. Anyone else wish to speak?
Jim Storey, 601 17th Avenue, Southwest, Little Falls. I'm kind of just neutral on this because there's a few things that I'm not quite sure. I dragged through town, and we got hot-wanted signs at Falls Fab, out at the old methanol plant. Airborne has something in the paper all the time. How, how are we helping the people in our community already to supply them with good workers and, and so they can maximize their ability to manufacture goods, to bring people into town here, when they're already paying their, their fair, you know, in, in their taxes and stuff? Like I say, I'm not against this, I'm not for it either. I need, I'm looking for some answers on, how do we, how do we fill the positions that the current people within our city need help with workers, along with, you know, are they gonna, you know, at this, if they come into town, are they gonna, are they gonna take workers from these other facilities, and then now, now that's going to decrease their ability to make product for their customers? I guess I just, I, it's something I, I would like to answer.
Anyone else wish to speak? Hearing not, 8:10, we'll close the public hearing. Call to discussion? Action for discussion?
You looking for a motion?
Absolutely.
Okay. I, I move we adopt Resolution 2018-87.
Motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Councilmember Conopla, on Resolution number 2018-87. Discussion? Hearing not, resolution, call the rule.
Urco?
Yes.
Lumber? Yes. Zilka?
Yes.
Hancler?
Yes.
Conopla?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Carries.